Good evening. We'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, November 9th at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our invocation and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
Let's pray. Oh God, our Father, we bow in your presence this evening, Father, to thank you for the blessings that are ours. Father, as a community, we have seen your touch, we have felt your guidance, and we have seen your wisdom. Father, we pray for that to continue this evening upon these men and women gathered in this room who have been given the administration of this community. Father, pray your blessings give them wisdom beyond their own understanding to make decisions that will bless the families of this community, strengthen the children, and Father, may it might all grow in the grace and the knowledge that is ours. So, Father, we thank you for those who commit themselves to serving us. Pray your blessings and safety upon them as well. We bring all these to you in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, if we could also remember, we lost a friend in the economic development arena. Words can't even begin to describe the impact Karen Lauerman had, not only on Lake County, but specifically the town of Maryville, AmeriPlux at the crossroads, Silos at Sanders Farm, a lot of the economic development we've had in the past 15 years probably had Karen's fingerprints all over it. So, please keep Karen and her family in your prayers.
Commissioner Ward, would you lead us in the pledge?
I plead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Trezor, can you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilman Span.
President.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Yuzelak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
And President Bell.
Here.
All seven accounted for.
Seven present, thank you. Moving on tonight, we have petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We are pleased and honored tonight to present a new police officer to the town, Officer Dylan S. Mesurick. I will call for the Maryville Police Commissioners who are present for a swearing-in ceremony here in the front. Assistant Chief Costa Nusis, hi. Right up front, Kelly. Nope, Kelly.
Up here.
Right here. Thank you.
If you have to be, raise your right hand. I, Dylan Stephen Mesurick.
I, Dylan Stephen Mesurick.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States of America.
of the United States of America.
and the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
and the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and partially.
and partially.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge my duties.
discharge my duties.
as a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
as a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
in the town of Maryville, Indiana.
in the town of Maryville, Indiana.
according to the law.
according to the law.
and the best of my skill.
and the best of my skill.
and ability.
and ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I could just give a real quick introduction to Dylan. Dylan comes to us from Gary Police Department, where he's got over three years of experience. During his time at the Gary Police Department, he was in patrol and he also operated in the traffic unit. So, I know we have always an issue with speeding vehicles, and Dylan's going to be a perfect fit for us. Also, he has aspirations of being a K-9 officer. I think he's got a lot to bring to the table, and I think he's going to be an excellent addition to the Maryville Police Department.
Thank you.
I sit down.
Burgundy shirt.
Burgundy?
Yes.
Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for November 9th, 2022, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes of October 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Span for approval of the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President, I was just asking for some corrections. From the last one, they have you down as President Bell, B-E-L-L. So, I just think we need to correct that for the minutes.
What section are you looking at, Leonard?
Town of Maryville, October 25th meeting, meeting minutes.
Yeah, where is that?
Under petitions and communications and remonstrations.
Okay.
It is, yeah. We'll make that, with that correction.
Thank you for that. Anything else?
That's it.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committees, we have Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President. Oh, yes, I don't, sorry. We had a ARP meeting this evening, and we approved two more projects. One, that's probably, we're going to expend probably $5,000, and the other one, we're going to expend probably about $6,000 to help. One guy needs a roof yesterday, so we're going to expedite that. And then, the other one was a church that, back in June, when we had that storm, tree fell down on their sign, and demolished their sign as well as their roof. So, I think those were two worthwhile projects, and I'm waiting, I've got Eric Cender, he's going to give me information next meeting, so that we'll know exactly how much money we've spent so far on this project. And at the same time, I'd always encourage residents that even though it's starting to get cold now, we can start planning for next year. If you have something that's coming up for next year, please let me know and let the committee know. We'll sit down, have a meeting on it, and even though you may not be able to complete it this year, we'll be looking to extend that time so that you'll be ready to go as soon as the weather breaks.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we had a Council Affairs Committee meeting before the council meeting. First of all, I'd like to announce, the next Council Affairs meeting will be two weeks from yesterday, November 22nd at 4:30. In our meeting, we went through 14 different topics, ranging from donation boxes, portable basketball courts, dumpsters, carports, storage boxes, noxious weeds, semi-trailers, parking, parking and recreational vehicles in residential, blocking mailboxes, variety of topics. We've instructed Mr. Svetnov and his colleagues to prepare a variety of ordinances at the recommendation of Vicky Benell and Sheila Shine, and the committee will revisit those ordinance in draft form at the meeting on the 22nd at 4:30.
That's good, thank you. Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir. As we know, leaf pickup is still ongoing. I know in my neighborhood, they're on their second round. We have been seeing a lot of piles of leaves actually in the street. They only have to be right there at the curb, by the edge of the property. They can extend into the yard to clean up the leaves. So, let's try not to clutter up the streets with big leaf piles. Other than that, another could probably be around a third time, correct? Is three chips around, Steve?
Yeah, that's correct. We'll go through the town.
So, if you don't get it this time, there'll be one more time around.
Yep.
And that would be all. As we know, winter's coming up. I'm not going to go through all that spiel right now, but we all know the preparations we need to make before winter time, and we'll go at that at that time. Thank you, sir.
I got one thing on that, Mr. President, because I'm seeing a lot of branches that are at the curb, and we're not picking up branches right now. So, at some point, the residents need to figure out how to move those to the North Barn.
They can come to our facility on 73rd Avenue. The North Barn's closed for the year.
Okay.
We're taking them at 13 West 73rd Avenue. Just check in at the office, and we have a place for residents to dispose of them.
I guess, from a code enforcement standpoint, Vicky, as you ride through or as your people ride through, and they see this, just give them a warning and let them know that we're not picking them up, and they need to figure out what to do with them. Thank you.
And I also have to report, those boats in the driveway, they have to be picked up by October 31st. And I called into Tiffany, Vicky, I seen a couple in my ward. So, maybe she got to it, I don't know.
Yeah, she dressed the ones in your ward.
One was on Lane Street.
She's got a report on that later on, Marge.
Okay.
In her report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, that's okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Hardaway?
No, that's all I have, thank you.
Moving on to Elections, Public Relations and Town Beautification, Mr. Pettit.
First topic, Elections. Obviously, yesterday was quite a busy day across the country with the midterm elections, here in Lake County and here in Maryville. Hopefully, everyone got out to vote and let their opinion be known. Under Public Relations, many of you have signed up. We have the Crossroads Regional Chamber Commerce Annual Gala, at which time we'll be honoring the Officer of the Year, as well as the Firefighter of the Year. That's on Saturday, November 19th. Hopefully, everyone's gotten their name into Linda, because we already ordered the food at Avalon Manor. And then, on Town Beautification, I want to give kudos to Councilman Minchuck. Saw some pictures of a very nice entryway that's being developed and installed for the Turkey Creek subdivision on 73rd Avenue in Van Buren. So, nice job, Jeff.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President. Actually, I would like to ask Marge if she wanted me to go ahead and do the COVID report.
Oh, yeah, you're the chairman.
Okay, thank you. Looking at the cases that we have, we have 54 cases in the past 14 days. That's an increase of 25% since the last reading that we had. We also had 35 hospitalizations, and that was an increase of 11%, and we had no deaths. So, this thing is still out here. I know a lot of people still catching this, and I don't know a lot we can do about it, but I'm just saying, in terms of getting that booster shot. So, that's pretty much on COVID. Mr. President, I also would like to take a moment to thank some, excuse me, to thank Maryville School Leader, for better lack of words, for having her students to come out and help on the 57th and Broadway, just clean up all the way down to Hidden Lake. And also, Mr. Nexus Employment Solution brought 20 employees, when I think that cost them a lot of money, bringing those 20 employees. But we collect a third of a ton of trash. And I appreciate the young people being out there. Actually, that's one of the best days I've felt since I've been on the councilman, to see that kind of activity and people input. And then, you've got private businesses that want to spend their money to help us to keep Maryville great. So, that's pretty much it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, if you look in your packet, council people and elected officials, we have a personnel policy acknowledgement and consent. And all this is, is just said, I, in my case, Richard Hardaway, as elected town councilperson of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, acknowledging consent to abide by the current personnel policy for the Town of Maryville as amended time to time. All this is, is that, you know, just letting employees know that we support them, and that by us agreeing with this, it shows them that we're not above them. Everybody is the same when it comes to following the rules. And so, I've signed mine, and Jeff has signed his, and Sean has signed his, and Councilman Bell has signed his. It's not mandatory that you sign it, not the end of the world. If you don't sign it, it's just to show the employees that we support them and that we think that when we make rules, the rules are for everybody and not just for the employees. Elected officials have to follow rules as well. So, Pat, you can collect these at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway.
If anyone has any questions about it, I'd be glad, happy to answer it, but otherwise, thank you guys for that. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Negotiations are still ongoing. Hopefully, I'm going to try to wrap those up as soon as we possibly can, but they are going well.
Negotiations with who? Mr. Minchuck.
I'm sorry?
With who? Negotiations with what firm?
Oh, I'm sorry. With the FOP, I apologize.
Still sleeping.
I'm, yeah, I'm.
Negotiations with our FOP. Okay, thank you. That's why I'm here. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzelak.
Well, the parks are in order. They have been mowed. There's some leaves flying around, which I'm sure maybe Torrance has something to report. The bike trail is in order, too. And maybe Torrance has something to give on the parks.
No report on the parks as of this time.
Well, everything is in order in the subdivisions right now.
Good. All right, thank you, Marge.
Okay.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
I will defer to Vicky later, Mr. President. She has a report for us.
Thank you. Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. The bleachers are finally at the Dean and Barbara, at the Weiss Family Field at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Thank you, Steve and Torrance and Jeff. Diligence, persistence pays off, guys. On a side note, I received, I believe it was an email from Jeff, that the Pop Warner League that uses the Weiss Family Field has two sectional champions. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was going to wait till the end of the meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry to steal your thunder, Jeff.
That's okay. Just go, continue.
That's their home field. I just figured I would bring it up. Tomorrow, we're going to be on a Zoom call, Torrance and Pat and I and Barb, to discuss Boys and Girls Club. Mr. Svetnov has drafted a usage agreement. We're going to try and finalize that. Joe also has a purchase agreement in place for the Boys and Girls Club to buy the three acres at the center, the vacant three acres. It's off to the South and West. We'll be discussing that. Torrance, do you have anything inside the center to report on?
No, this past Friday, we did a Faces of Suicide seminar with Geminists, and it was targeting veterans, just providing information with Veterans Day's coming up, just signs, what to do, PTSD, those type of things. It was a well-attended event. We're still continuing to book now and into 2023 right now.
That's all, Mr. President.
And I'll just ask for some clarity, Mr. Pettit, the purchase of the land by the Boys and Girls Club, they're actually, that's going to be to actually build a.
Build a club there, yes. Yes, they will build a Maryville in the near future, we hope. And the facility usage agreement has been reviewed by their legal. The purchase agreement is supposed to be reviewed by their legal over the weekend.
That's good news. Thank you. Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to yield to you first the Toys for Tots.
Oh, sure. As everyone can see, we have some totes here. Maryville Town Hall this year is going to be a collection center to support the Toys for Tots program. This comes out of an office out of Holbert, actually, and they informed us that there's a shortage of toys for teenaged children. They get plenty of dolls and things like that for really small children, but they're looking for more things for teenagers. You'll see up here, like skateboards and basketballs and things like that, which are kind of geared more toward a teenage age person. So, we're collecting through the second week of December. There's a tote out there in the hallway, too, so you can just come in anytime between 8:00 and 4:00 and drop off a new unwrapped toy, and we'll put it in a collection if somebody has an interest. So.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three other things to discuss. First, we talked about at the last council meeting, a house decorating contest, and applications will be available from November 14th till December 12th. And this is, I'll read it briefly. The contest will be limited to decorations that can be seen from the street, from the street side of the house at night. Judging will take place between December 14th and December 21st from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Please have your decorations turned on, no later than 6:00 PM every night of the judging week. Judging will take place, rain or shine. If your lights are not on, you will not, you will be subject to disqualification. Judges' decisions are final and not subject to objection. Winners will be notified in person on December 22nd. There will be one winning home chosen in each ward. Participants will not be judged by their ward councilman. Prizes will consist of a $100 gift card. You'll get a yard sign and a decorative award to display in your home. Participants are requested to keep their houses decorated through January 8th, so that others in your community can enjoy them. These applications are available online, and you could contact Town Administration, and we'll be happy to give you a application, and we're looking for a great turnout for that. Secondly, the Town of Maryville would like to invite you to what we consider an ugly sweater contest and staff holiday luncheon Town Hall on Tuesday, December 13th, 11:30 to 1:30 PM. To enter the contest, all you have to do is show up at the luncheon dressed in your ugliest sweater attire. There will be ballot boxes where everyone can cast their vote. There will be one award given for each of the following categories, funniest, ugliest, and most creative. Ballots will be counted and prizes awarded by 3:00 PM. The contest and lunch will be open to all town staff. Each department will need a RSVP, a head count for lunch to Linda, Town Administration, before Monday, December 5th. And next, we have a holiday door decorating contest. A lot of contests going on here.
Let's clarify, the sweater is for town employees, right?
Yes, all town employees. All departments at the Town Hall are encouraged to participate. Decorating can start immediately, and judging will be by the council prior to December 27th council meeting. The winning department will receive bragging rights and a trophy to display for all to see. Next, this coming Saturday, starting at 8:00 at the McDonald's at 61st and Broadway, they will be, the Black McDonald's Operators Association will be passing out turkeys starting at 8:00. And it's first come, first served, and then it's until they run out. I have no idea how many there will be, but they are looking for at least, I heard radio interviews, and they said they had over 2,000 for four McDonald's. So, hopefully, we can, if they do it equally, we'll get 500 turkeys to pass out. And I guess I'm going to yield to you that, to see if I can get EMA out for traffic control at morning, because we don't want to, because that's going to be like horrible.
That's Friday, Richard?
This Saturday.
It's Saturday.
Saturday.
It's going to be wonderful, Richard.
I know it's going to be wonderful, but I just want to make sure that we don't impede people just trying to get up and down Broadway. Next, there's going to be at the Community Center on December 18th, Torrance. That's, Lerner and Row will be giving away turkeys that day from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
November 18th.
November 18th, thank you. Yeah. So, that's another opportunity for turkeys. And then, finally, Coats for Kids. Last year, Impact Church gave away 400 coats to children on December 19th from 9:00 to 12:00 PM. And Impact Church again will be giving away.
November 19th.
November 19th? What am I keep saying? I'm not saying November? Okay, November 19th. I'm trying to press rush this year. And that's from 9:00 to 12:00 PM at Impact Church, 7071 Broadway. So, all are welcome for that. And we will have a Christmas tree lighting, finally, on November 25th, is at 6:00 PM. And prior to that, we're bringing in a big tree, a large tree, 18 to 20 footer. So, we're going to ask for volunteers, anybody that wants to come by and help decorate the tree whenever we figure it out when it's coming. Mr. President, do you know yet?
We're waiting for Mr. King to organize that with the vendor, so, yeah.
The tree, probably, I've been working with Hubinger Landscaping on this, and the tree will probably be put on site next week to give plenty of time to get it decorated for the tree lighting ceremony.
Thank you. Yes, it's going to take a while to decorate it.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway, I should add, the reason we're bringing in a tree is that the tree donated to us from the Lions Club just is not large enough yet to accommodate any kind of big celebration of size, and we need to let it kind of grow, so we don't want to damage it, because it's actually planted. But in the future, that tree will be available for this purpose.
Right. So, yeah. So, anybody that wants to volunteer to donate, to decorate that, please let us know, and the more the merrier there.
Oh, just to add to what you said, I did call Santa Claus.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And he said he's going to be here, so.
Okay.
That's the biggest news right there.
Santa Claus is coming, and we're going to have hot chocolate and donuts. That's all I got.
Mr. President?
Great stuff. Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to add a little bit here. Even with the contest about the yard decorations and the door decorations, actually, myself and some other individuals I know, we've been planning that for like three weeks. I didn't actually know the town had any interest in that, because we had started working on that. Myself and the Northwest Indiana Black Community Connection, we put that on Facebook about three weeks ago. I didn't know the town was interested in it. But here's what, here's where the problem come in. This makes them not want to do things in the terms of, if they think they're going to put it out there, then all of a sudden, the town's doing it. Then, it kind of negates what the community is trying to do for itself.
Doing what exactly? What kind of?
Actually, we're going to have, similar to what Richard talked about, we're going to have.
Tree lighting ceremony?
No, door decoration, yard decoration.
Door decorations for internal, for Town Hall?
No, I thought he said.
No, he's talking about house decorations.
Right. Yeah. So, we had started working on that three, approximately three weeks ago, and when I think it got posted on Facebook. I was just saying that when they see this, that the town's going to do it, then I think that's going to kind of shut that down for them, because we need to let, well, it's important, Rick, you know.
Well, I think the more the merrier, actually. Another contest is great.
Absolutely. I just think it was an idea that was out there already, and I think this kind of discourages them. I'm sure I'm going to hear about it tonight. But I guess the more the merrier. But that was something that Ward 7 and the precinct people in my ward, we had already started that, so.
You missed the last council meeting, Mr.?
I did.
Yeah, and because it was announced at that meeting.
Yep, but we was kind of working on it before the last.
I didn't catch it on Facebook, so maybe.
Well, I'm not on Facebook either, so I never would have knew that.
Okay. I was just saying that, you know, how it just went past me, but that was all I had to add to that. Thanks.
There was no harm intended on it.
Go ahead and do yours. That shouldn't impede anything. If one house, if somebody wins two times, then they'll be happy. They'll be twice as happy.
Yeah, because I think the gifts were like $200 for, in the terms, and then we was going to have judges and things of that nature. So, I guess we're all doing it at the same time, so.
Well, it is the holiday time, so it makes sense.
Yes. We didn't do it last year, though, right?
Would you like to keep the floor and discuss your Lake County Solid Waste Management District?
Was I too talking?
Oh, if you're finished with that topic, go ahead.
No, I guess that was your hint to move forward.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Actually, Solid Waste District, there's no report for it. I guess you knew that was not going to be a report. So, no report for the Solid Waste District.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Stormwater Management Resources, anything from Matt, Pat?
No, sir, not at this point.
South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Riordan.
Thank you, sir. As I have informed you, the organization is sponsoring a legislative reception that's tomorrow evening, Hard Rock Cafe from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. That'll be followed by what's termed Partnership Summit, and that's open to affiliates, partners, obviously, of the organization. So, if any council member is interested in. So, if any council member, uh, is interested, um, in, in going to that event, um, there are two sessions. The event's on the 16th, uh, the morning session is 9:00 at 11:30, and the afternoon session is 2:00 to 4:30. And then we have a board meeting next Thursday.
Very good. Yeah, now that Executive Director David Urant's got his feet wet a little bit, um, it should be nice to invite him to one of our council meetings and give us an update, kinda present to us what's going on a little bit.
That's fine.
He lives pretty close to us, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, yeah, we've...
Maybe extend the invitation.
I, I certainly will.
Be great. Uh, Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck, Mr. Spann?
Nothing scheduled.
Uh, Department Reports, Terrence, anything else to add?
Uh, would like to congratulate cheerleaders of Pop Warner. Uh, we have two JV teams who won state honors, qualified for Nationals in Orlando.
Great, excellent. Chief Newses?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to give everybody a report of September statistics for the Police Department. Once again, we had over 4,000 calls for service. Uh, we had a little bit of a break, um, in August, but unfortunately, came back up. Uh, one of the messages I wanted to put out, and this is relevant to the time of year, this is the time of year where you see an increase in thefts, robberies, et cetera. So, we would just like to make sure everybody is aware of their surroundings, everybody has their vehicles locked. Also, scams seem to be a huge problem right now, phone scams. People are calling and posing as the Police Department and threatening that they are in debt or that they have to pay some type of tax bill, and if they don't pay it, they're gonna collect via Sheriff's Department or Police Department. I just wanted to put on record that the Police Department would never, ever tell somebody that they're gonna take them to jail if they have a bill to pay that's not paid. That's, uh, it, it's happening again.
Scam.
Scams, yes, sir. Uh, one of the other things, I know we've had a problem with traffic. We've implemented a, a new directive that's going to be boosting our traffic enforcement, and I should have more documentation with this shortly to give a, uh, an idea of what we're doing. Uh, also, I wanna, on a different note, I would like to thank you, Councilman Minchuck, for that beautiful, um, project there at Turkey Creek. I'm a resident of Turkey Creek, and I love it. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Code Enforcement, Vicki Pennell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, as a lot of people have found, we've started November 1st with, uh, campers boats and trailers in the residential areas. They can't be in your driveway, in front of your house, and that was from November 1st until March 31st. Uh, warnings have been issued. There will be followed up with citations if the boats, campers, trailers aren't removed. And the other thing we've been working on is cargo containers. A lot of commercial, uh, businesses have those big cargo containers, and those aren't allowed. So, we've been writing letters, giving warnings so that people know that, and those get removed. That's the two things we're really working on right now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question for Vicki. Yes, Vicki, if you get an opportunity, can, I think we talked about this before, and I don't think the people addressed it, when you went on 58th and Taff Street. It's, it's, it's a little business going on there. I see cars out there, um, all over the place, and then when the garage doors open, you can actually see what they're doing in there. But one of the major things that I had kept my eye on was the amount of tires that are accumulating there, and those tires still, uh, remain there, so I was wondering, can you check that out for us, please? Thanks.
Sure.
I got one thing to add. The tracks are blocked off, they're working on those railroad tracks on, uh, Taff Street in there. Nobody going in and out right in that area right now, you know?
Can I add to that, Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yeah, so, what you're saying, so when you come out of your subdivision, you can't go...
Right, I can't turn toward the tracks, I gotta go 73rd.
You gotta go all the way down to 73rd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'll let people know.
It blocked off, so... So, probably a hassle, you know?
Uh, Planning and Building, Sheila Shine?
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. King?
Several things here, um, our paving program is gonna be wrapping up for the year here very shortly. We have some straggler, um, things to take care of out there. There's an area on 54th Place, we're gonna go back and revisit, um, in that 55th Place. Mr. Hardaway, I'll look at that tomorrow. I didn't get a chance to do that today.
Okay, yeah, let me know tomorrow.
I'll let you know, yeah. Um, 63rd Place and Councilman Spann's Ward, um, there's, there's three streets over there that were delayed by Indiana American Water. Um, so, th- those are, uh, Indiana American Water notified us midsummer, they weren't gonna do the project, so we, they had it scheduled for, uh, concrete work, um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, with paving to follow, to follow the final, uh, the week of Thanksgiving. Um, so, we should have that, weather permitting, we'll have that wrapped up by the, the week of Thanksgiving, so, Mr. Damo should be, should be happy with that. So, I'll speak on the road closures real quick. The, the Taff Street closure, that was a surprise, uh, to, to me. Um, that was an emergency closing by Endot. Um, it wasn't handled very well by them. Uh, signage was inadequate, some other things. I got a call from the railroad myself about the signage, so I had to call a contractor, um, rather than fight within dot, and have them bring some additional signs out to notify the public that the tracks were closed. Um, so we put up a couple barricades on each end. Um, it seems to be working. That project is supposed to be wrapped up by end of day tomorrow, um, for, for the tracks. 73rd Avenue, the message boards are all over town, that is in Nipco Project and 73rd Avenue. Um, next week, the week of the 14th, weather permitting, um, they're gonna, they're gonna need the road closure for two days to erect this tower, it's a 125-foot tower. Um, the road's gonna be closed between 8:00 AM and 3:30 PM, between Taff Street and Arthur Boulevard. Arthur Boulevard is the entrance to Village Green, so you'll be able to get all the way down Taff up, or 73rd, pardon me, up to that point. Um, that has been put on the message boards as, as well, so everybody knows that. Um, and it is, uh, all this information is also on the Town website. Detour routes, um, things like that, that's all on the website. Um, the speed limit signs have come in, the news, the, 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 well, we ordered six... The additionals, we ordered 16. Um, four are gonna be, you know, um, mounted on existing signs, and we have two that we're gonna mount to portable trailers, which we already have the trailers, we just gotta retrofit them for the, uh, for the new signage, so I'll be awaiting, um, locations for those. Whenever we're ready, just let me know where they, they need to go. You can email me, call me, um, we'll get a list together, and we'll, we'll start taking care of that. Um, Mr. Hardaway also mentioned the, the branches. We stopped picking up September 30th, as he stated, we get calls every single day about branches. Um, it's in the newsletter, uh, when it ended, um, again, you're more than welcome to bring them to us. Uh, 13 West 73rd Avenue, check in with Brenda in the office, and she'll direct you where to go. Um, then our leaf vac program is still ongoing, um, we got a few more rounds to go. Uh, it'll be ending our last week, our last week starts the 21st of November. Um, we'll, we'll go through that week, and that'll, that'll be the end of our leaf vac pickup. Um, also, Friday is a holiday for us, but we will have a couple crews out working, um, keeping up on picking up them leaves. Uh, we had probably enough for two crews volunteer, uh, to work Friday so we can keep this program going and, and keep caught up, so, that's all I have.
Mr. King? You know, now that it's dark at 4:30 in the afternoon?
Yes, yes.
And it's dark much later in the morning?
Yes.
That's a lot of darkness here in town.
It is.
And we talked recently, as of yesterday, I think, about so many lights that are out in town.
Yes, yes.
And I don't know if we have a fuse problem, I know it's multiple lights in a row, up and down Broadway, 93rd Avenue, et cetera. What, what did you find out?
So, this continued, the, the lights continue to be ongoing problem for us. Um, a lot of the lights here on Broadway are, um, because of the construction project, we're waiting on five new light poles to come in, so that's why it's, it's so dark out there, the poles haven't come in yet. Um, Broadway and Route 30, that's a constant battle for us, and, and we, we've got Midwestern Electric involved to get it fixed once and for all, um, so we don't have that problem anymore. Also, 93rd Avenue, I had our lighting guy go out the other day, there's, there's 22 bulbs that are out that need to be replaced.
But that seems odd that we would lose that many bulbs at the same...
It's, I don't know if they're all at the same time or one, yeah, that I'm not sure.
Yeah, they are, I would've called you.
Okay, so, but we, we're tackling that problem, um, but we are tackling that problem now. Besides our internal lighting person, we've, we've got Midwestern, uh, who does our maintenance work, we've got them involved because it's become, it's become a big problem, uh, in town, so they're kinda helping us get things back on track with that.
Good, I just wanted to mention it so residents realize, you know, we see it too, and we're working on it, so...
Yeah, and if you have a streetlight, oh, good, if you have a streetlight out in your neighborhood, just calling the public works. We, we got a list, we'll write it down, and we'll get out there, um, quickly and evaluate what the problem is, whether the bulb's out or, or, you know, something needs to be replaced, but we'll take care of that. Um, also, before I finish, I've got, um, two title sheets, uh, for a set of plans for our CNO trail project that I need signatures from all the council.
Okay.
Um, so we can get this back to our, uh, our design consultant.
Mr. White?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm glad you're talking about lights tonight. When I, actually, when I noticed most of the lights went out was when we had that last huge storm. They went out, and then I seen quite a few never came back on, so I don't know if it got hit with a power surge or whatever, but nevertheless, in 100% agreement, that is a, a lot of lights out.
Yeah, the light, especially in a windstorm, those lights take a lot of abuse. If you, if you watch them, you'll, you'll see them swaying, there's a lot of vibration in those lights, and the elements get broken very easy in those, um, so, we're, we're, we're on top of it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Bella?
Mr. Pettit?
Uh, Steve, did they open Mississippi today?
Mississippi will be open, um, by end of the day, Friday.
Okay.
I know they're finishing the striping up today. Um, they're putting in some safety measures, because there's some, the gaps in the curb where, uh, Arco Murray did some work. So, those safety measures are gonna get put in place, and it will be open Friday. Glad you mentioned that.
Thank you. Pat, anything else to add?
Yes, I do, thank you. Um, staff is working with a local contractor, Butler, Vermin, and Seifert in, uh, response to an, uh, notification of funding opportunity that Mr. Hardaway shared with us. This is presented to us through NERPC. Uh, the funding deals with, uh, 2024 through 2028. Excited, there's, there's two planning applications that we're gonna submit, and there's two construction projects that we're gonna submit. And, um, the one construction project is 61st Avenue from the Maryville-Hobart border all the way over to Taff Street. And so, vision, if you will, 100, pardon me, 61st Avenue, uh, looking like, similar to 93rd Avenue. And, uh, we expect, uh, the application to be completed and submitted, Mr. Hardaway, by the November 18th deadline. Second, um, you can't help but notice it, um, the Sitco Gas Station just north of us, uh, the, the construction stalled, we had some issues with the, uh, the project. Um, I, I believe each of you are aware, we've tried to keep you in the loop. Staff is waiting for, uh, Fire Chief Yurka to give us the okay. He's waiting for written confirmation from Department of Environmental Management to let us know it's okay. We will then, um, uh, allow for the project to continue. Um, it, we, we don't relish stopping development projects, but they need to be done correctly. Um, we're working with developers on projects, potential projects at 30 and Grant, Madison, and 73rd Avenue, the former Carriage House property, and, uh, what we call Becknell 2. Lastly, uh, we, we, this is constant, um, we're continuing to work with prospects on several commercial retail businesses, and we'll keep the council in the loop, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pettit?
Pat, what's the second construction project for the NERPC application?
Um, well, the second construction project, actually, um, what is it? Are we, maybe I misspoke, 61st, we're breaking it down in, into three areas, so, um, that, the, the second might be, uh, the, the suggested, uh, possible roundabout that, of course, we now have learned that Endot loves, they're talking about a possible roundabout on, on that route. Um, we, we know about the Hobart Project with a roundabout at 61st and Marcella.
Yes, that's going through.
Right, right, so, I, I guess it, that could, we could look at it as three construction projects, but we're submitting it as, as one. Planning Project, Councilman, um, is, um, the prospect of extending 93rd Avenue at Mississippi all the way over to Colorado. And, um, I, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank here. I thought, pardon, I, there's, and I'll report back to you, but the, the other project, we're touching on four, four ward areas in the town with this application, and we were excited about that.
Okay, just a reminder, um, for the rest of the council that might not remember, the last time we rebuilt 61st Avenue from I-65 to Broadway, uh, that will qualify out of the Mississippi Street Tiff, because the northern boundary of the Mississippi Street Tiff District is 61st Avenue.
Okay.
Mississippi I-65 down, and then it, it balloons out. So, if this is an 80/20 match, or a 90/10 match?
We can cover it.
We can cover the match out of the Mississippi Street Tiff District through the redevelopment commission.
And I, I don't presuppose to know how we'll, we'll, we'll end up in the voting, um, but the fact that we're gonna go in with cash identified is, is huge.
Yeah.
It's huge.
When did we do that, Rich? How long ago was that, we did 61st Avenue, seven years ago?
Ron was the, the councilman of the wards, so, it's been a while. That's when we put the sidewalks in.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Mr. White?
Uh, no, I was, uh, actually, I had talked to Pat, actually, I sent him an email about it. I was kinda happy, uh, to see some type of activity occurring on 61st Avenue. I did discuss some things about the roundabout with a few constituents, and they seem to be kinda on board with that, if we're talking about the same place on 61st and Taff Street.
That's correct.
Yeah, they seem to say that, that might work better there than the one on 73rd.
Well, and, and Councilman, thank you for that. I just wanna caution everybody, um, this is, it's not even in the discussion slash consideration phase.
It's years away.
Yeah, right, right.
It's probably, it's probably 2026, 2028, before it even starts.
Right.
Yeah. So, so, so choose, so, the 61st Avenue project, you're, you know, what we're gonna envision is a lot of, uh, a lot of aesthetics, ornamental lighting?
Yes.
Planters, things of that, illuminated signs as they need to be, um, intersection improvements?
Yes.
Um, modernizing all that stuff, those are conversations we've had. Um, and I do wanna bring up one thing, we got an email last week, um, from a consultant who works with Crown Point and us, and Endot is, is looking at the Broadway corridor. They finally decided to take a look after we've had meetings with them, we've had, you know, nothing come out of those meetings, um, they're, they're looking at it. And with, with that, um, I was told that if, if we had any political influence, it could speed that process up.
Maybe, maybe Representative Soliday needs to look at that at the same time.
What are we looking, what are we looking to do, Steve?
So, we're looking for, um, well, be support from us in Crown Point, but if we had any, you know, political influence, um, 'cause I think...
Broadway widening and improvement from 93rd Avenue all the way down...
All the way, all the way to 231.
Well, really, really, guys, it ought to start at US 30, because that concrete median is embarrassing in front of the hospital. That's ridiculous, that's embarrassing.
So, what, if I can, uh, as... So what, if I can, as Steve mentioned, we've had several meetings with Crown Point. And so I, I think that in short order, we can plan a, a planning meeting, if you will, and invite at Soliday and quite frankly, anyone else who could help carry the day for both Maryville and Crown Point downstate.
I think looking inviting Senator Milton.
Yep.
That I think he'd be a key person.
Sure.
Julie Artoff.
Yeah. I recently spoke with him, actually.
I, I think that those are the key people there. When you talk about political power.
Yeah.
Those people will help us get this thing done.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, we were told that that, that does escalate projects tremendously. So that would be, that'd be great.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Moving on tonight to general orders, we have no first reading ordinances, but we do have a second reading ordinance, ordinance 22-25. Mr. Bearden.
Thank you, Councilman Bella. This is presented to us by the Fire Department.
Yes.
Again, ordinance that has to do with appropriating monies within the various territory funds to ensure that accounts are paid timely and that all current expenses are met.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval of ordinance 22-25 on second and final reading is an appropriation for the Fire Department Health Life, $42,000 and a Fire Department Training and Supplies at $100,000. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Is there any public comment tonight on this ordinance? This is the second reading ordinance. Seeing none, back to the council. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Usulak.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, and motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. We have no resolutions tonight, but moving on to item 10, the American Rescue Plan, we have a council payable voucher for November 9th. Mr. Hardaway.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. The, the amount is 179,460.59. I make a motion that we approve this voucher.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval of the ARP voucher. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, anything to add?
No.
Any other comments from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yes, I was reviewing this. I want to make sure this is more current than what I'm looking at. I'm looking at a HEPA Chapter 78, nonprofit, $1,500. And I, I thought we kind of just gave them some dollars.
This, this actually is the donation that we did. We're just now getting around to issuing the check to them because we were waiting for their W-9.
Got it.
To come in to prove their status, Leonard.
Okay.
And we just got it.
All right, thanks.
So that's the same donation.
Okay.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Are there any BZA or large gathering actions, Sheila?
No large gathering or BZA actions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. Any old business before us?
Mr. President, I probably should have done this under my public relations report and Jeff can appreciate this because it really is old business, but I just want to wish Maryville Football Team, the Pirates are playing in the regional on Friday night here in town against their hated rivals, the Valpo Vikings. And conversely, my heart goes with Andrean. As you guys know, they are hosting Lafayette Central Catholic also in town Friday night.
And they'd never beat them.
So good luck to both of the football teams. Jeff, may the best team win.
Do we want to send out a little wager for Mayor Murphy in Valpo?
All right, that's up to you, Mr. President.
I'll give Matt a call. No offense taken, but it is a rivalry, right? Moving on tonight to new business. Any new business before us? Mr. Minchuck.
I got, my thunder was kind of taken, but I was going to say, yes, we do have our high school going to Valpo for the sectional. But we also had, as Terrence mentioned it earlier, the cheerleading Pop Warner team or squad that's going down for nationals. We also had two of the football teams won a state championship. 10-year-old team and a 12-year-old team both won the state championship. They're now moving on to the national process. They got two games to play and if they play the two games and win those two, they go to Florida for the national championship for the whole country. So let's keep behind our kids, let them know we're for them. Once they're done with this whole process, I'd love to get them in here and recognize them for their efforts. So that's all I got.
Where do you plan that?
The, the, I'm sorry, the 10U team, I can't remember who they played because I wasn't there for that game. I go to all the games. I'm a crazy dork. The 12U game, they played against Gary for the state championship. They won that game, it was a really close game. Now, this Saturday, they travel to Illinois and I believe they're playing a team out of Wisconsin. And then that depends on where they go next and then Florida, so.
Nice.
Good luck to all of them. Hope they do well. I bet they've done great up to this point, but even better.
Yep. Congratulations.
It's that field, Jeff. That's who does it.
You know what? I'm not here to wave no flags or anything, but that's why we do all this is for these kids, so they got somewhere to go, something to do. So it's nice to see some rewards coming back and see them shining. That's all.
Thank you. Any other new business before us? Moving on to special presentations, we have none this evening. Public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. My name is Ernestine Barnes. I'm from the Vita Luxury Apartments that's in Maryville, 8500 Grant Circle. I'm basically back tonight to, I know that you guys were supposed to come out and concerning the concerns that we had and I was trying to get some feedback on what happened when you came out.
So, Mrs. Barnes, we had to reschedule and so when we go out, the fire inspector and myself both are going to go out together. I will let you know.
Okay.
It will probably be next week.
Okay. Just an update on what's going on. We are trying to work with the community owners, not the owners, the management company. Some of the things are still not resolved. Some of the things are still not clear. At this point, we had a community gathering with the tenants and to take it a step further because we're not seem to getting any response. You know, we might have to get Channel 7 out. We might, we don't know, but we, we just really need to move on this because a lot of things going on. We just don't feel it's really feasible or fair to the seniors. When we had our meeting, it was very wonderful to see Councilman Leonard White came out to support us, to get information and to see some of the things that was going on. Thank you. We appreciate your present and taking it out of your schedule, your busy schedule. What I would like to request is the ordinance of what are some of the ordinance of the building that we need to understand and get clarity on with the inspections, the coding of maybe the fire part extinguishes and things like that. Maybe it will give us a better understanding on stuff like that because we don't really know what, because we know they have to come through here. Okay? But what we don't understand is how it works far is when they buy the property and knowing that they're buying it as it is and how it is, we still not getting things resolved. When we was here for 2019, those problems are still there. So this is not a problem that's been, just currently exists. This is a problem that they inherit when they bought the property.
So, Mrs. Barnes, the fire inspector and myself has, he is going to come to do a presentation on the things in which he covers when he comes with the state fire inspector. He's going to do, he has agreed to come and meet with you all and do that because there are some things that he and us as a town can address and there are some things we cannot because it is private property. But when it comes to safety, those are the things. So he and I and the state fire inspector, he's agreed to come out and meet with the residents and I have to set that up with Ms. Smith, of course, to, before, you know, we can just barging into the HEPA.
Right.
But he has agreed to do that because there are some things that you, that the residents need to understand what we can and cannot do. It is a private facility. It is not a HUD facility. So he and I talked about that, you know, like when he came out and he looked at the, what you call was the, you said it was.
Fire extinguish, the plexiglass.
Things, he says that the fact that you, that the building is fully sprinkled, you're much safer with the fact that it's sprinkled than that, although the state fire inspector says that those things are up to code. But, so he has agreed, he, you know, he felt that there are some things that you all as residents didn't quite understand where we can go and what we can, where we cannot go. So he has agreed to do that and I have to set that up with Ms. Smith. I don't know if you all have monthly meetings or whatever, but we have to set that up with her.
Okay.
In order to come in. And I don't know whether all the buildings meet at one time or we have to do building by building, but he has agreed to do that.
Okay. Now, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but there is an ordinance written out saying what is and what is not. Is that correct?
Oh, certainly. We followed, we, we, there's an international fire code.
Okay, but that's all, that's what I would like.
International fire codes, international building codes. The town of Maryville adopts the Indiana International Building Code. And I, I know we're not supposed to do this, Mr. President, so if you would come to my office and we was, and set up a meeting time, Bob and I would be happy to meet with anybody who comes.
Okay. But there, there is not a paper ordinance that I can just have and review?
So our ordinance is online. Our entire ordinance is online. If you come to the office and you want me to pull something out, make copies for you, I can do that. But our ordinance is, is online, the Maryville Municipal Code.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. Sabina Miller, 3120 West 75th Place. The first thing I want to do is provide a reminder about those branches that waste management takes those without charge in a separate container or in your trash container as long as the branches are small enough. And I have never given a single branch to the town of Maryville, even if we have storms coming through because of that reason. So there is no need for the town to continue having these arguments if we just, when they call, make, make residents aware of the fact that that is something waste management does for us. I appreciated the mention of the trash pickup. My recommendation is that we partner with the fast food places in town because most of the trash that I see out there comes from fast food places and I think they should be helping us collect that trash in town. About the parks, Rosenbaum, Mrs. Usulak, I would like to tell you that the roof on that pavilion is in terrible shape. And if we don't start doing something, I would have to assume that the roof, we're going to lose that on that pavilion there. So you may want to have somebody look at that. Another item, the mention about Toys for Tots. I am actually a member of the Marine Corps League and one thing I know is that people can also make monetary donations. The monetary donations, the Marine Corps League can actually buy more toys with the money because they got the partnerships. And then they could also cover the fact that there are teenagers that don't get items and they could actually complement whatever we're donating in the world of toys. Another comment was about the tracks at Taft. I happen to be driving down to Innsbruck Country Club today and traffic was flowing freely, so the sign was pushed aside on 73rd. So for some reason, it must have been open tonight. Not sure why.
Taft, Taft Street, Pam?
Taft, yeah. I mean, there was like tons of traffic going back and forth tonight.
It's blocked out.
It is, huh?
They may be finished for the day and opened it, who knows?
That's what I wondered. But that was at dark. It was not during the day.
Yeah, when I, when I came to, to the meeting, I, I noticed it had all these orange stripe blockades all the way across.
They were pushed out of Taft. They were not on Taft when I came through.
Okay, okay.
So another question I may have is, we were talking about the lights at Broadway and 30. Would that be an expense that Indot carries because it's really two of their roads or does the town have to pay for those?
The, the maintenance of the lights is the town's responsibility.
Okay, all right. And I think that was all I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Williams and I'm at the Viva Apartment, not luxury, Viva Apartment Building. And it's been a lot of stuff going on there. You know, it's not good because them, those contractors that whoever got out there supposed to be fixing stuff up, they leaving the doors open. Come in at night, the door standing wide open, one door, the front door, you can just open it, it don't lock no more, you know. So it said, here, tenant's safety and well-being. Ain't no safety out there. Ain't no safety. And they got, it's just a mess. Them contractors they got working out there, you got to put a shower cap on when you brush your teeth over your sink. Yeah, you got to put a shower cap on. Because where they done busted pipes and tanned up stuff, the water come down. If you don't have a shower cap on, you might as well wash your hair. Then they got stained and all this stuff, 55 and older, they got a lot of young people out there. Like I say, those doors are open, some of them won't shut. You can come out, they got big stones, some of them contractors them put in the door to hold it open for different coming in and out. It's just unsafe, really. And so, and they done painted the inside some old jailhouse dark green and no lighting. It's dark when you come through them hallways. It's dark. It's dark. People come in, me too, at night, coming in, going out. I'm scared to go out in the daylight. But it used to be like that, but it's like that now. They were supposed to fix the roof on the garage that's next to my apartment. I'm on the second floor. I don't know what they did, but that had wind, somebody was talking, the shingles flew off on my balcony. When I came in, it was nice. I come in, it was that windy day, shingles flying everywhere. I saw the guys when they were up there doing the roof, supposed to be doing it. So I don't know if they using cheap material or what they doing. But the safety thing is a lot of our concern. The bills is going up. I told them, I don't want them, that port, I don't, I go pay my own water bill. We've been doing, we're older. I'm 72, 71 years old. I've been paying my bills for years. I'm retired re of United States Steel Corporation, Gary Works, for 36 years. And when I first moved out here, it was nice. It ain't nothing like that no more. You fear for your safety every time you go out and I get dark early, you know. I go to the jails and volunteer. I go to Serenity House and hold meetings for those less fortunate every Thursday and Friday. I've been doing this for like seven, eight years. I go to Lake County for the women. So every Wednesday, which was today. So, yeah, it's just a lot of things since they've been up there, they tanned up and when they painted, couldn't even get in our apartment because they, when you're not there, they done painted the doors shut. Just, to me, it's a sloppy job and it's a lot of youngsters. Ain't no old people, older men. That's what I thought we would see. All these youngsters out there. out there, you know, it's just all messed up. Then, then they, the water bill I got was fifty-five dollars. I'm the only one that live there. I ain't use that much water, and, but you know what? I'm not getting on them portals and all that, I'm doing like I did for all this new stuff come along. I've always gone and paid my bills, you know, that was for all this come along. Then I keep the receipts, that way I know if they ask, I got it, I got the proof.
Okay, finish up, please, ma'am.
So, uh-
Ma'am?
It's just, uh, messed up, and I know my two minutes is up. Uh, that's all I got.
It's three, it's three, but way over. That's all right.
Yo, yo, three minutes.
What I would suggest, uh-
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm, my name's Josh Caselli, I live at Seventy-three Ten Marshall Street. Um, I'm here tonight because I know we, we addressed it earlier in the meeting, um, you hired a new officer, I'm so grateful for that, but the speeding on my road is ridiculous. Um, whether it be people, or I've caught school buses. I mean, the speed limit on my road's twenty miles an hour, and people are probably doing forty or fifty miles an hour, it's, it's nuts. All I'm asking for is, if possible, can we do more police patrols in the neighborhoods?
Yeah, good, thank you, that's the plan, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We're right there with you, we agree a hundred percent, just so you know.
Thank you.
I saw Chief Costa there making some notes, so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you, first of all, for everything you guys do, and, uh, touching on the lighting problem, uh, I hope that just the main intersections aren't going to get all the attention, that, especially with night coming, you know, earlier now, and crime picking up this time of year, that, uh, we get the local neighborhoods as well, the, the both lights that are out.
Sure.
Uh, but actually, my concern was with the code, um, enforcement, and I have a Class ARV, which I park on my property on the side of the house. I understand if, uh, we have problems, I mean, if somebody's parking boats or trailers or whatnot, blocking driveways and, uh, stick pickup and leaf pickup or garbage or anything in the front of the house, it might be a sore, uh, spot, but I'm hoping that maybe we could get some type of, um, understanding on this ordinance, or maybe some, uh, the way that it's written, so that it's allowed, that you're able to put your property, keep your property on your property. I had my RV stored in a storage facility, and it was broken into, and that was behind locks and fence with the storage facility. Naturally, they refused to take any, um, responsibility for it, and it was thousands of dollars worth of damage done to my RV. It's been much safer parking on the side of my house, um, I haven't had any problem. Uh, my neighbors don't seem to have any problem with it being there. My other neighbor next door has a rather large boat, and, uh, they have their boat there as well on their side of the property, the lots are pretty big over in Georgia Heights. And, um, there's another neighbor further down the street, he has a camper as well, and he keeps his way further back in the property. So, I mean, it's, it's not bothering any leaf pickup, garbage pickup, uh, the sticks or mailboxes or anything, and, and I could understand the ordinance for those type of, you know, situations, or even eyesores, maybe in the driveways, but, uh, I would like to see an amendment or something towards, uh, this rule, so that we're able to keep our property on our property, which seems to be safer than at a storage facility, that I've had a problem with documented, you know, that I could show you guys, you know, that, uh, you know, is thousands of, they broke into like eight RVs at this storage facility, and, uh, it took me all summer to get my door fixed and replaced on my RV. So, I'm hoping that, uh, maybe we could also, I don't know, you know, Vicki's been wonderful, I spoke with her earlier this week, and, uh, she gave me the information that she could give me. However, naturally, she doesn't make the ordinances or the rules. Uh, so you find people here. I hope that we could have understanding, uh, even, because I know my neighbors feel the same way, in fact, some of them would have been here, but my other neighbor, she had a surgery recently, she has her large boat there on her property, and-
Finish up, sir, please.
We'd, we'd like to see some change. Also, uh, do we know what the fine is? I know that, uh, there's going to be a fine for having your boat or trailer or RV on the property, but, uh, there's nowhere on the website or anything, I think, where we can see what the fine is, because I know my neighbor, she can't move her, she just had surgery.
We're revising all of that, and you bring up a good point, as far as a property with multiple acreage, if it could be stored somewhere in the back and it's not an issue at all, so that's something that we'll look at it, because we're just now redoing those ordinances.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
That's a really good suggestion, by the way.
What, what can we do in the meantime? Because this week, you know, we're, we're basically required to move it, and, uh, I don't know what to do.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Joe.
Since we're in the process of redoing these ordinances, um, I say we go ahead and, uh, declare a temporary extension for another two weeks. Do you think that would be ample amount of time? Or what do we need, maybe a little bit more than that?
Well, we're having our council affairs meeting on the twenty-second, but it, it becomes a question as we get into that meeting-
You got to get it approved, yeah.
And, and all committee meetings are open to the public. So, if you want to attend the, the meeting on the twenty-second at four-thirty, you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, I wrote that down here.
Uh, you know, the question that comes for the council is, you know, how, how are we going to do these? And I, and I guess I turn to, to legal counsel, as you write the draft ordinance, Joe, what we, you know, we kind of had this discussion, sir, in the committee meeting. Um, you know, I, I don't know how we're, how we want to tackle this, guys, ladies and gentlemen. I mean, this is, uh, you know, um, the, the problem we've got, sir, is just because your neighborhood in Georgia Heights, some of your neighbors, adjoining neighbors are fine, I may have someone, Mrs. Usulak may have someone out in young America that's doing it, and the neighbors aren't happy with it, and they expect the town to do something. And so, trying to craft that ordinance that's uniform all over town, you know, that's, I, I don't know how we're-
I'll be sure to attend, uh, the meeting on the twenty-second at four-thirty.
Yeah, by all means.
Is it here?
It'll be in the conference room and back there, yeah.
Okay, so just come in and then ask, too.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, um, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment tonight? Seeing none?
Mr. President, could I just add one thing?
Oh, chief, go ahead.
To the residents of Vita Apartments, um, I understand your concerns, and would it help if I had a couple extra officers coming and making extra passes through there in the evening hours especially?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll do that, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, what would help us, too, is if you guys could just get together and just get us a list of all those issues, and we'll be able to highlight the ones that the town can do something about, and all the ones that the town cannot. Okay, just leave that with us tonight, we'll take a look at that again.
Leave it with town man.
Just give it to Pat tonight, if you don't mind, yeah. That's all we can really do, and the ones that we can't do anything about, we'll try to guide you where you can go, so. A Plan Commission meeting on November sixteenth, is that canceled?
That's canceled, we did not have a workshop.
That's going to be canceled, that's my announcement, it's canceled?
It's canceled.
We're going to have a ARP meeting instead at five, what did we say, five o'clock?
Yes. Five o'clock?
Five o'clock, in its place.
Okay. Redevelopment Commission meeting on November twenty-second at six o'clock, that's prior to the Town Council meeting, also on November twenty-second at six-thirty. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We're adjourned.
Hey, Costa.
Thank you. And let's-